Okay, and if you can see the light on up there, that means we get to go. So, welcome everyone this evening, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. And first on the agenda is going to be the Pledge Allegiance, but we have got a treat this evening, and it's going to be led by Girl Scout Troop 2004-7. Would you like to come forward, gals, and lead us in the Pledge Allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a very good job. You did that perfectly. And would anybody like to come up and introduce yourself or and mention about your Girl Scout Troop? Yes. Go ahead. And then there's the microphone.
My name is Rihanna.
Rihanna? And what's, where's your Girl Scout Troop? Where do you guys meet at? So, what place is it? Do you want to go to the microphone and say?
The Albany Hut.
Yeah. And there's a lot of folks in our community that don't know that there is a Girl Scout Troop Hut, and it's over in the West Albany area, around the Tequena School District area. And it has been there, I believe, since the 60s, 50s, 60s? Yeah, a long time. So, yeah, you're fortunate to be able to have a nice little building to be able to, you know, have your troop meeting, so. Okay, did anyone else want to come up? Okay.
My name is Loki.
Loki? Welcome.
My name is Caitlin.
Caitlin, welcome. Is that it? Oh, yes.
My name is Parker.
Parker? Welcome, Parker.
My name is Lorena.
Lorena, welcome. And I see lots of badges, too, on your vest.
My name is Elena, and I'm in 3rd grade.
Elena? So, welcome. All right, anyone else? Well, thank you, girls, so much. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, next would be roll call, Holly.
Hey, Councilor Calhoun?
Here.
Hupcinski?
Here.
Sykes?
Yo.
Olson?
Here.
Gilbert?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
And Mayor Koenke?
Here. Okay, and next is a proclamation. This is Homeless Persons Memorial Day for December 21st, 2017. Whereas every member of society, including individuals experiencing homelessness, deserves the dignity of safe, decent, accessible, and affordable housing. And whereas winter poses extreme hardship for inadequately housed, low-income men, women, and children in Albany. And whereas, in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Albany are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all people, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas, in remembering those who have died without homes, the cause of ending homelessness remains urgent to prevent such deaths in the future. And whereas, the shortest day of the year has been designated National Homeless Persons' Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council, and is recognized by cities nationwide. Now therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2017 as Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In Albany, Oregon, in recognition of the people who have died on our streets, in our emergency shelters, and in condemned or abandoned properties from ailments or conditions directly related to homelessness, I hereby ask all citizens to take a moment of silence in remembering those who have died homeless, and encourage our citizens to support local efforts to eliminate homelessness here. In witness whereof, I hereby hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed the 6th day of December 2017. And with that, on December 21st is the Homeless Memorial Day event, which is out in front of City Hall's Plaza, and it's at 4:30 or 5:00?
5:30.
5:30. Very nice event, where we will be reading the names of the homeless that have died in our community this year. I do know there is one person that we'll be, we'll be reading his name, and he was a person that lived out in Camp Boondoggle, that we had shut down, that camp back in 2006. He had lived out there for 15 years. So, being out in the elements like that is very hard on a person. And he was able to get into housing after that, and, but, but over time, things just end up, is very hard on a person's system, and we did lose him this year. So, it's amazing how many I have seen since Camp Boondoggle, that, you know, you don't have a lot of longevity in life when you are living in those conditions for so long. You're not eating properly and taking care of yourself properly. So, it is very sad in our community. It's why we are very, you know, adamant, our community, about not enabling homelessness and making sure that resources are there to be able to get a roof over someone's head. So, that's our goal in the city, is to be able to have everyone be in a dwelling and not be homeless, so. So, I do hope people are able to attend that event on December 21st. Okay? Thank you, folks. All right, next is a public hearing. And this, you'll have to bear with me, folks, I'll have to read a script on this one, too. So, "On tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding zoning map amendment from residential medium-density, RM, to residential medium-density attached, RMA, as described in planning file ZC-0317. The property owner is Angem Incorporated of Hoffman Estates, Illinois, represented tonight by architect Jeffrey C. James of Salem. I call to order this quasi-judicial public hearing at 7:23 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? And do any members wish to report a site visit?"
I said I'd drive by it all the time, but no specific site visit.
Okay. "And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criterion the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code, which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond." So, at this time, I'll call for the staff report. Planner David Martino?
Hi, David Martino, the partner in community development in the planning division for the City of Albany. With me tonight also, I have my colleagues Ron Irish and Matthew Rutgers available to answer questions that may remain unanswered. So, to summarize the request, this is a 2.15-acre parcel of land that's undeveloped, that's presently zoned RMA, which is medium-density residential. And the reason for the zone change is there's a person who would like to do a residential apartment complex on the property and be able to develop under densities that are allowed under the RMA zone that aren't allowed in the RRM zone. And the Comprehensive Plan designation for the property is medium-density residential, and that plan designation indicates that both the RRM and the RMA can implement that medium-density residential zone. The applicant, again, is Angem Incorporated, and is represented by Jeffrey James of Salem, Oregon. The property is located on an unaddressed parcel just east of 2135 Queen Avenue Southeast. So, for zone changes, there's five criteria that need to be considered when evaluating a zone change, and each one needs to be satisfied in order to recommend approval. And I do have a few copies of the review criterion here at the counter, if anybody needs to pick one up. So, the first criterion is whether or not the proposed base zone is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan map designation, and staff has found that it does. Again, the Comprehensive Plan designation is medium-density residential, and that can accommodate both the zone of RRM and RMA. The second criterion, existing or anticipated transportation facilities are adequate for uses that are permitted under the proposed zone designation. So, zone changes are subject to a state requirement known as the Transportation Planning Rule. That rule requires a review of the impact that the zone change might have on the transportation system. All identified significant effects must be addressed through one of the mitigation options identified in the rule. And how this meets the second criterion is addressed more completely in the staff report, but I will summarize that the proposed zone change has the potential for adding 11 PNP hour trips to the public street system, but the addition of those trips will not have a significant effect on the operation of the system or degrade the performance of an already failing facility. The third criterion talks about utilities and whether we have adequate utilities, police and fire protection to accommodate the development, given the potential for the zone change. Public utilities are available to the site and are adequate to serve the development on the subject parcel, whether it's under the existing RRM designation or the proposed RMA zoning designation. The Greater Albany School District was informed of the proposed amendment, and no comments were received at the time of the staff report. And the City of Albany Police Department, Fire Department served the property. There's no adverse impacts on the affected service area that are anticipated with the zoning map amendment request. The fourth criterion states that the intent and purpose of the proposed zoning district best satisfies the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Again, this is analyzed more completely in the staff report that you have, but there are two goals that were identified as being most relevant in considering the proposed RMA zoning amendment, and those are Goal 2, which is land use planning, and Goal 10, which is housing. And to compare and contrast the two, the table of allowable uses are nearly identical in the RRM and the RMA zone. About the only residential use that's not allowed in the RMA zone are single-family detached dwellings. And that's because the RMA stands for medium-density residential attached. So duplexes, triplexes, apartments, those types of condominiums are allowed in that zone, just not detached single-family residences. There are some differences in density. For instance, in the RRM zone, there's a zoning cap density of 25 units per acre, which goes up to 35 units per acre under the RMA zone. So, there is a potential of having more intense residential uses in the RMA district. However, there's also the factor of being compatible with surrounding land uses. And this is an area that is uniquely situated in that it has public transportation directly on Queen Avenue, and it's also within a half a mile of parks and major shopping centers in the area, which make it a good candidate for a place with higher density development. It also serves to offset density pressures in other residential zones that may allow multifamily development. So, we believe on balance that the RMA zoning designation best satisfies the applicable goals and policies of the Albany Comprehensive Plan. The fifth criterion says, "The land use and transportation pattern recommended in any applicable city contracted or funded land use or transportation plan or study has been followed unless the applicant demonstrates good cause for the departure from the plan or the study." So, the proposed land use with the zone change is consistent with the land use assumptions that were incorporated in the transportation system plan, and the proposed zone change will not modify that transportation pattern envisioned by the plan. So, as far as public notification and comments, this went through another public hearing before this one tonight. The notice of public hearing regarding the zone change request was mailed on October 17th. The staff report has been posted on the city's website since October 30th. The property is posted. We did receive verbal testimony at the Planning Commission public hearing, which was held November 6th, 2017, and that testimony was provided by one individual. And as of 3:00 PM this afternoon, there have been no other written comments received. So, again, there's the zoning criteria that you have to consider the zone change request, and we recommend approval of this zone change as presented by the staff report and upheld by the Planning Commission.
Any council staff clarifying questions regarding the staff report? So, we will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please come to the podium, state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the commission?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeffrey James, architect and planner for this project, and also the owner's representative in that the owner, Angem Incorporated, even though they've owned extensive property in Albany for many, many years, their main office is in Arizona. So, I'm serving as the local coordinator as well as the designer. And so, I was responsible for the report that was prepared to show, in that the burden of proof is on the applicant to show conformance with the criteria. We did make an effort to do a complete report that addressed all the criteria, and evidently it was persuasive. And we've had a very smooth and professional approach process all the way through. As you know, there's several steps to this. We have a pre-application conference with all the staff, first of all, so that we're assured that everybody agrees that this makes sense, this slight upgrade of zoning is compatible with the, your comprehensive plan, and all the utilities are available. And so, then we, after the pre-application conference, we had a meeting with the neighbors, surrounding neighbors. We met at the library and discussed anybody's concerns. There were several folks there from 17th, just concerned about if you have an apartment complex on that, an about 2.15-acre piece, and the fire department is asking that it be open to 17th, which we have no objection to. You know, what's the effect on them? So, that was, that was a concern. Somebody mentioned, "Well, I prefer single-story buildings," but, you know, under RRM zoning, three-story apartments are already zoned, so I think an RMA would allow 70-foot-high buildings, but we're not proposing that. We're just, it's going to be a three-story apartment building with just a few more units allowed under the RMA zoning. And then under the, the next step in this process would be a very detailed design review, site plan review. And that's where the staff kind of analyzed that we've met all the design criteria for setbacks and landscaping, and there's a computation that, to arrive at exactly how many units. Under the Albany code, there is a number of units per acre in the zone. And then there is a, another computation, you use a factor depending on the apartment size, of square footage that you, in relation to the overall size of the property, that's a further determination of number of units. And that's usually lower than what's allowed in the code. But then, to compensate for that, your code allows three or four density bonus criteria that we, we and the staff feel that we probably qualify for at least a couple of them. One would be if you're, the code says if you're within 200 feet of a major arterial, like Queen Avenue, you're allowed a 10% increase in units. So, that compensates for the lower figure that the initial arithmetic might have arrived at. So, and then we're planning some solar easements, and that gives us another density bonus. We'll document that, and that'll be part of the, of the deed eventually for the property, to protect solar rights, and that gives us a bonus. I think the maximum's 20% increase it's allowed. So, between us and the planning staff, we, we're anticipating we'll arrive at something like 48 units, about half of which would be two-bedroom, about half of which would be one-bedroom. Just very good quality apartments with, and you find the type of people that move into those apartments are almost house proud, you know, they enjoy being in a nice, quality living unit, and so they take care of their property, and there'll be an onsite property manager, local property management company. And so, we think that everything is, is looking favorable in terms of the city's response to our proposal. And I'd like to just summarize from the, from the staff report, about three sentences in the staff report that can summarize, and we concur with what they say. The staff say that, they conclude that the availability of utilities, infrastructure, and transit make the 2.15-acre property an ideal candidate for infill development in the city. Then they go on to say, excuse me for reading from this, "On balance, the evidence supports changing the zone, zoning designation of the subject property from RRM to RMA." And finally, I quote this sentence, "Therefore, the staff recommendation is approval of the proposed zoning map amendment." And we had a hearing before the planning commission, and they also concurred. So, we're looking forward to moving to the next step, you know, if you were to also concur with the staff and the applicant. And then we'll do a detailed design and go through the detailed design review and come up with, hopefully, I mean, my profession is architecture, so I plan to do a good job of aesthetics and landscaping, so it'll be a good asset to the neighborhood and to Albany, we hope, at least we're going to try.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. James, you had mentioned that when you had the neighborhood meeting at the library, you know, with the neighbors, that there was concern over the transportation and access onto 17th. So, how will you address that concern, then?
The, well, we're kind of, the city policy is cost connectivity, and also, probably more importantly, fire protection. So, for emergency access, this needs to be opened up to 17th. And so, the immediate concern that we heard from the neighbors was, "Well, your folks, your residents are going to be using 17th as a shortcut or as an access." And so, and the fire department doesn't want a gate, which is sometimes done, you put a gate, and then the fire department has a key. And I know that's done in Salem a lot in instances, but they want it left open, which is fine. So, this is a detailed design point, but the other day, the owner, the property owner called me and said, "What if we, what if we just run the 10-foot grass lawn strip across that opening and put in what's called mountable curbs? They're like six foot, six-inch-high concrete curbs, but they're designed so that a vehicle could drive over them. It's like a speed bump." And so, that would dissuade the residents from using it as a daily access, because you wouldn't want to, if you respect your property, you're not going to drive over landscaping. But if there was a fire emergency, of course, the fire trucks could just drive straight in. And also, the residents of 17th could then come, come and go, and if that feels like a shortcut to the library, take that route through the circulation system, the walkways through the apartment complex, maybe as a more attractive way for them to get around when they go, say, east from 17th. So, that's something we'll talk about with the staff, see if that would be a partial solution, so that you don't get those cars using 17th on a normal basis, but it's, it's open as required by the fire department. That may be a designed solution.
Right. I think you're probably going to need to take into consideration, because we do want connecting streets, and you got to think of the tenants living there. It would be a shorter route for them to get to the store if they took 17th and went on north on up to 16th and around, so. But if it is going to be open, there's going to be, need to be some street improvements to take place on that.
On 17th?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
That hasn't come up so far in the discussions, other than some of the neighbors saying, "Well, yeah, we'll need a, a street improved." But as a applicant and staff level, it hasn't been, you know, a condition of approval at this point. But you be the judge and decide what, what you think is appropriate in, in the circumstances. But it is an issue, you know, how we deal with it.
Yeah, right. Because what we'll look at is, you benefit from this, and, but it's, we just don't want the city to be coming back later that we're stuck having to improve it, so, yeah. But it's something just to keep in the back of your mind, but, yeah. Yes, Rich?
I don't know if this is the, if you're the correct person or our staff is at this point. I was thinking in terms of pedestrian egress. Is there perimeter fencing of some sort?
Yes, there will be.
Okay. Because I could hear people along 17th or, or the people who are abut on 16th, if you have numbers of people, "Wait a minute, it's really close to just go to Heritage Mall if we just cut through this guy's side yard." And if there is something in the works for that, that's great. Fine.
Yeah, we plan on six-foot side-up scoring fence all the way around, except for the opening we just discussed, to 17th.
I do think you can go eight feet, though, if you're around from apartment complex to single-family, and you might want to consider it. There is apartment complexes that, once you build the fence up, they don't want to go around and they start tearing holes in the fence to get through. So, I can show you many situations like that throughout the community if that's happened. Questions for the other hand?
That's all.
Questions? Yes, I see.
Another question to comment is, living close to Queen, this property, you know, like any vacant lot, has always been, you know, the tall grass and everything in the summer and stuff. So, I think this is a very good project, and, but my question is, there's quite a few different square footage here for the one and two bedrooms. Is it, one bedroom's about 1,500 and the two bedroom's 1,800? Is that what's?
No, that's the, the number that the Albany code uses as a computation of how many units are permitted. The actual, that is just the arithmetic used in the zoning codes here. And it's kind of unique to Albany. I haven't come across it in other, any other cities, but it gives you that added protection. And it's like two or three hurdles that the applicant has to go through to determine the number of permitted units. The actual size of the units would be about 900 and 1,800. The actual size of the units would be about 950 square feet for a two-bedroom and about 750 for, exactly for a one-bedroom. They're nice units.
Yeah, and, and because I'm really not up on the rent, approximately, what would the rent, what is the rental market right now?
I'm not up on Albany market rates in Salem. It is, it ranges from a dollar to these days, more like a dollar 25 per square foot.
Okay.
So.
So they'd be in the reasonable to where?
Yeah, people are paying almost a thousand dollars.
Oh, I know.
And have been renting.
Okay.
Is this gonna be market rate or is this gonna be a tax credit property or?
Market rate.
Market rate.
Yes. There is a, an incentive in, in your code if we were to use an incentive or a subsidy, government subsidy for low income, then we get a density bonus. But we don't see that we qualify for that because we're planning on all nice market rates, middle income folks. And so, right, market rate is what the proposal is.
Okay. Let's go ahead. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question for staff based on a comment Mr. James said. Should I save that for later?
Yeah, let's go ahead and see if there's any public testimony.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. Okay, we will now be taking public testimony. As I recognize you, please come to the podium, state your full name and address, spell your last name, and make any comments you have for the council's consideration. If anyone wishes to enter and exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. Holly, did anybody sign up on the sheet?
We have one individual.
Okay, can I have that? Or just go ahead and? Okay, Patricia Barnes.
My name is Patricia Barnes, last name B-A-R-N-E-S, and I live on 2035 17th Avenue. So I'm the closest person to the proposed new building. And Mayor, I would like to thank you for your question about 17th Street because that is one of our major concerns. We're happy with the street the way it is and we know that if later on they come down and say, okay, this needs to be bigger, it's us they're gonna want to make responsible for it. When it will be them who is causing the need for the extra work done on this street. One of our other concerns is the height of it. And RM states that it can be 45, if I remember right, and RMA can be 60. That's quite a bit of different height. And this is another one of our concerns. I say R because there's other people that are concerned, but they're all the same concerns, so they're just having one of us speak. And, sorry. And the, one of the things, policy, I believe it's policy eight, encouraging neighborhood identity. Okay, right now, we are a small community. You add 66 units and we're no longer a small community. We're going to be busy and there's gonna be a lot of people, more noise, and this is another concern because from, I don't recall how many, I could not hear how many he said they planned on putting in. But on some of the other things that I've found, it says 66. And that's up from the 49 or 52 that's allowed at the RMA, if I'm correct, I hope. And of course, we have some personal concerns about it. For instance, we are on wells, the most majority of us, and we're wondering how their building is going to affect our wells. Because your water goes down through the water, the ground and into the wells. So that's another concern. I think that was the majority of my concern.
You can come up with her, yes, and then still identify.
She may have some others that I have not thought of.
And still, you'll have to say your name and address, yeah.
My name is Evelyn Archmandy, A-R-J-M-A-N-D-I. I live at 2016 South East 17th. I've been there nine years. And in the last three years, 20 of us in our little neighborhood, our little community have had our third neighbor's night out. We know each other. We care about each other's concerns, we care about each other's wells and our parking, we care about strangers that come through. And we care about people watching in our backyards. We don't have very big, you look at this space here, this is what most people have. And to have someone up here watching down in your space, your private space, it's really uncomfortable. Crowding is uncomfortable and that's what I think this RMA is going to be crowding our neighborhood. And I just feel like we're gonna lose something precious. I know we need housing, but is a thousand dollars a month what the homeless can afford? Are there jobs to support those people at a thousand dollars a month? That's just the rent, that's not the utilities and their food. Right now, I'm on social security and I, and I'm still going to Gleaners for my food. I get a thousand five hundred. So it's not gonna be easy for them. So why make it harder for all of us by making it crowded? And I think 17th is fine like it is. Why should we make our road more accessible to them at our expense? At our expense? If you look at our homes, they're our homes, just like the homeless people. It's what we can afford. We could all be homeless too if it wasn't for what we have.
Yeah, and like she said, the 17th Avenue is concerned because he says they're not gonna come down. They are. You're gonna come down to it to go to Safeways, you're going to come down that road to go to the library, you're gonna come down that road, even for Fred Myers, the mall, any place that there is, they're going to come. If they don't come down, say they go out Queens, you've got Burkhart to consider also because Burkhart is just, what, a block and a half? It's narrow to. Entering from Queens to Burkhart sometimes can be very challenging.
But we like it that way. They keep sell fast cars.
Yes, because people try to avoid Gary, the one with the camera, so they will come down Burkhart. You got, also you have 16 that I've noticed and then I'm not sure which the one from 16 over is, that goes by the library. Notice that it looks like it's being worn quite a bit right now. So you're gonna add more traffic to these places, people coming down 16th because they don't wanna go past those intersections where the traffic control was set up at. And the additional, additional apartments mean more people, so.
And more cars?
And more cars. And I feel sorry for them when they try to park because they're not gonna find parking spaces. Because there won't be any on 17th because there's 30-some cars, I think, on 17th right now, about 25 at least of residents that need parking for their vehicles.
Wow.
So, I mean, improving it, it's not going to add to the parking. We all park with our talons on the city property really, which would be a road. So that would mean we'd have to park legally the other way.
Okay, I'm Angela Barnes, I live at 20, it's last name's B-A-R-N-E-S. I, excuse my mom, so I live at 2035 17th Avenue.
You'll need to get, Angela, you'll need to get closer to the microphone.
Sorry.
Yeah.
The main concern about the road is the fact that it should be a 50-foot road, but if you drive down it right now, it's probably only like 20 feet. So when they build the apartments and they build the entrance there, are they going to build the entrance to 50 feet or just the 20 feet that the road is now? So that's like the major problem because like, if you drive down the one road, our side is pretty much where it should be, but like the other side is like half the road is not there. It's like grass or a little bit of gravel. I mean, she just put gravel on her part, which is actually city property, but she just put gravel there and there's like trees right there. So my concern is the fact that if they do that, are they gonna put the 50 feet that it's supposed to be or are they gonna only make the entrance to 20 feet? And if they do the 50 feet, our concern is the fact that they're gonna make us come and pay for it later and that can be a big bill. And I'm not saying that it needs to be a concrete develop or like the asphalt, but if they could just do the gravel and the oil like is now, the 20 feet, it's just the gravel and the oil, that would be fine because then at least there would be the room and there would be the barriers and people would know where they should be, kind of a thing. Because right now, when you go down and like, my car's parked halfway out on the street, I admit that. There's tons of other people that have their whole car parked down the street, but they don't realize that. And so, like I said, the main concern is if people go driving down there and it's that big area, but it's not developed any, how many of those people that's coming from the apartments might not realize it for a while, maybe think, well, they're in the middle of the street and that's not right or something. So something, you know, our main concern is that street.
And the amount of traffic that will be on it. Because it's going to be major traffic, they're gonna be. And if you're adding an extra 17 units, that's a lot of more cars. They wanna walk down the street, that's fine. Right now, we walk at the edge of the street, which is fine. Our street is fine the way it is. We really kind of hate to see anything happen in more traffic. So that is why I appreciate very much your question about the street. But like I said, also, as I repeat, the height of the building.
Okay.
Because we're, the most that you can see right now, there's like four buildings that are two-story. That's it. Every place else around our little community is lower than that where we're at.
So part of this process, which to me is very unfortunate, when it comes to the zone change, we're not to be able to take into consideration really the site plan and the, the actual impact. So really a zone change is to see, can the transportation system actually support this development? So there will be, if it gets, if the zone change gets approved, even if it's not as increased for density, comes for the site plan, I think the neighborhood really needs to be able to state these concerns again. Because that's where you can be able to put conditions on for that approval, for that. But you'll need to be able to come, you know, come back at the other time. It's unfortunate the council can't take in all, all of the, you know, impacts when it comes to just the zone change because we have to just look at the criteria of the zone change.
So is there another time that we, you said that we could come and?
There will, there will, if, if the zone change's approved, either, either without the zone change, I can put in a site plan and then you're also, you know, there will be public testimony over that, you can be able to comment even, or if the zone change is even approved, you still can, either way on that. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's a time to vary and voice your concern too, if you have concerns.
Okay, policy eight, is that part of the, pardon, sorry, I can't pronounce it, criteria?
Anything in here should be on policy eight. Is that part of the transportation system policy you're looking at or?
No, it's, it's got under 412 housing goals.
Goal 10 housing?
Uh-huh.
Uh-huh.
And it's encouraged the development of greater neighborhoods. Okay, that's not gonna, and supporting neighborhood identity, that's gonna change our identity. So that is part of, that could be considered, right?
Right, mm-hmm. It's, unfortunately, it's subjective language if you're.
Yes.
It comes to, you know, part of that, so that is, you know, unfortunate, but no, we, that is something that you would want to pertain everything to criteria when it comes to a site plan approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so that was three that testified. Was there anyone else that wanted to testify on this application? Okay, all right. And does the applicant have any rebuttal to the testimony?
No.
Nope, okay. And does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented?
Mayor, I think, I think it'd be good to have David clarify the site plan procedures and how, how that translates for the public.
And with that, I mean, I, what's sort of been, this is the fourth time now that we have seen this, where we are having to just deal with the zone change. Where years back, we used to do zone change and site plan approval the same evening. And then that way, you really kinda knew what was really being planned for that zone change. And I just wish we could go back to that.
I think David's gonna clarify a little bit of.
Okay.
Well, the code unfortunately still allows both paths. You can either combine them and run them as concurrent applications or they could start with a zone change and then come in later with a site development request. Generally speaking, site plan review is what's required to do apartments when they're in a, a zone that they're allowed in. And that is a staff level review. There are appeals processes built into that, however. But what we'd end up doing with a site plan review application for, say, an apartment development is sending a notice of filing to property owners within a certain distance. Usually it's about 300 feet, sometimes more, to solicit public comment, which can be considered, but generally it would be a staff decision. It doesn't go to something like a public hearing. However, the site plan review has criteria that do look at more of the site-specific development issues such as traffic related to the development, not the zone, but the development, the utilities, whether the site has enough adequate buffering and screening to mitigate adverse impacts. And there is one thing I wanted to point out too, is that yes, it is true that in the RM zone, maximum building height is 45 feet. In the RMA, the maximum building height is 60 feet. But there are some building code challenges to doing stuff that's greater than three stories in height that make it rather cost prohibitive to do something like four or five stories unless it's a particularly large project, which would justify it. Maybe the applicant can speak some to that, that was alluded to and is, is submittal. But those are the maximum heights of those two zones.
So sort of the one thing to kind of prevent when it came to, when the site plan approvals used to come to the council, not just be in notification and people could, then the council was able to put on conditions and that would be conditions of improving, you know, access to a development too. So I think there's a lot of our process we need to go back to look at. We tried to during the downturn economy to kind of streamline the process, but now the streamline in that process is sometimes not in the best interest of neighborhoods too, so.
We understand.
Yeah, so this is kind of the fourth time now, we've been sort of seeing this kind of coming back inviting us after we changed that process years back, so, yeah. Okay, any other questions to David?
Oh, I do. He said grocery stores and library and et cetera are within half mile.
That's about correct, yes, sir.
Is that as the crow flies or as you're walking on foot?
I don't know that specifically at this time.
I'm guessing it's as the crow flies. And I, I don't see many crows in that neighborhood.
It would be one block over and then you, if you had, you're, you're on 17th, Safeways before you get to 14th?
Well, that's if you can get through on 17th.
They'd have to walk out, walk down or drive quite a ways. It was also a concern of mine.
There is though, however, public transportation and pedestrian routes that can be taken to these places as well.
Well, I'd feel better about it if we, if there were some connectivity across onto 16th, for instance. But it looks like that's pretty heavily filled up with buildings there and I'm not too familiar what those horseshoe kind of buildings are, those multiple family. too familiar what those horseshoe kind of buildings are, those multiple family.
Yeah, some are attached, single-family units, like duplexes, but each lot.
Can't walk through there, though, that's somebody else's property.
It's pretty dense right there, yes.
Yeah. We've planned ourselves to not have connectivity, and I think it's really unfortunate. So hopefully, we can change that in the future.
Well, some of it is based on what the neighborhood wants, and in some cases, you could have a pedestrian gate to go out to one of those streets, but if the neighbors don't want it.
Yeah.
Bill?
Just to clarify, the existing zone would allow for a three-story apartment building?
Yes, sir.
Only?
Yeah, less, less amount, yeah.
No question.
Yeah.
Is there a difference in the amount of parking required between RM and RMA?
Yeah, so the parking is calculated based on the number of units and the number of bedrooms in those units. So for instance, if the apartments were one-bedroom, each apartment would require one space. If the apartments were two-bedroom, each apartment would need one and a half spaces. For every four required parking spaces, there's one visitor parking space that's also required. So it really is dependent on the mix of how many one- and two-bedroom units you have and how many units overall you have, which drives what the parking requirement would be.
And I think I did read from the library neighborhood meeting about more cars than just one per apartment. And it's true, if you have a couple living or two people living in a one-bedroom, then there's usually two cars. So it's, what we've been finding is a big impact citywide from apartment complexes. So the lack of parking. I did have a question on the, under page 65, the conclusions and recommendations, and I think this is a wrong question. This would be for, it's a Level of Service D for Waverly and Queen, and it is anticipated to fail with or without the approval of the proposed zone change. So we recognize it's failing, but we don't mind having it fail some more. So is that what I'm reading?
Good evening. Yes, the analysis assumed that at the horizon year of our TSP, the intersection would fail if we made no improvements. There are improvements in the TSP for that intersection, but because we haven't designated funding or put them in the CIP yet, we don't consider those as being in place when we do the analysis. So there is a plan to keep it from failing, it's just with this analysis, we didn't assume that it was constructive.
And was this analysis done before Mega Foods closed up or after, you know?
It was probably done before they closed.
Okay. Does that make a big difference on the transportation on Queen?
I think Mega Foods closed at some point after the Winco store opened, so fairly recent, recent past.
I think Winco opened in August, wasn't it?
Well, but Mayor, that wouldn't make a lot of difference, because the people that own the building are going to try to put another Mega Foods or something like that there.
Right.
So the pressure is still gonna be there.
I'm just saying, when the traffic study was done, was it after they closed? Because then it would be less.
Worse. The date of the study was October of 2017, so the counts would have been taken probably two or three months before that.
It would have been, okay. Okay.
Just to follow up question, Ron, from what the mayor was saying. Is this situation where it's anticipated to fail with or without the approval? So I guess you just answered my own question then. Situation doesn't change whether we change the zone or not. I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a pertinent question.
Well, what you look for in the, in these TPR analysis, planning rule analysis, is whether or not, you know, the incremental increase in traffic because of a zone change would cause something to fail or not. So we tend to pay attention to intersections that we think are already close to failure. And so had we looked at the intersection of Queen and Waverly and saw that it was about to fail, but not quite yet, and that those 18 peak hour trips or 11 peak hour trips would have caused it to fail, that would have been a significant effect under the rule, and we've had, we've been able to ask for mitigation. In this case, what we found was that it failed both with and without, and essentially the element that, that number of trips, and in particular, the movements that were added to the intersection basically didn't have any impact on the intersection.
Thank you.
Okay.
Fail is worse.
All right. So any more questions of staff? Okay. I will declare the public hearing closed at 8:10 PM. And council, questions, discussions, or there's motion to adopt or motion to deny, that's on page five? What would you like to do?
Question?
Yeah, Bill?
So it seems to me that one of the biggest issues is the traffic, and as the neighbors testified, the traffic on 17th. The developer doesn't want to have an opening onto 17th. The citizens that live on 17th don't want an opening or a driveway on 17th. It seems like staff needs to work with the developer and the fire department and come up with a reasonable solution. It's frustrating when government works this way. And, you know, the gate system, if it, if it works, or if there's some version of a gate, you know, a crash gate or something that gives way when they drive in, or a key, whatever, they've got one behind Costco, I know that they have them. But it seems like a reasonable solution ought to be able to be worked out between staff and developer and the fire department. The, you know, the three-story apartments, I'm sympathetic to what the neighbors are saying, but that's why I asked for the clarification. You're gonna have three-story apartments whether it's on changes or not. There is an issue of heights, but as I'm reading the developer's information that was submitted, there's no value to them to go higher than 35 feet, other than it costs more money and have to have higher rents. Till you see a site plan, you know, you don't really confirm all that. But that would be my recommendation, is let's work something out with the fire department.
Agreed.
But aren't, but aren't those considerations when the site review comes, not for what we're doing tonight?
Right. But the council.
Yeah, I have no idea, Ray. My point is, I want to address the elephant in the room. I don't know why we can't work out a solution when, when nobody wants an opening. Those are the rules, you can't do it.
Well, and it's a valid concern, because this is where I was talking about the way the process is. If we had a site plan with a zone change, all of these questions would be addressed. And then if you want a, council could always put conditions on a site plan, but we can't with this process. Kind of ties our hands and so, but, you know, Councilor Coburn had a good suggestion to kind of plant a seed in the back of your mind when it comes to when you see a site plan come forward, you know, the, you know, council's concern.
Question?
Yep.
Is there a pathway where we can leave this open and have staff contact the fire department to see if something like that can be done before we say yea, nay, or okay, or whatever? May it seems to me that if, if we okay it, it's okayed because, oh gee, we can't say no. And we can't put any stipulations on it here. The fire department could, but we can't.
Sean said we can continue the public hearing, or continue the meeting. We'd close the public hearing, but we can still continue. Ron, did you?
Well, with our rules, I don't think we can. I think the rules say no, gotta wait until the site plan review. And that's why I'm involved in all of this.
I could provide an explanation of what, how the fire department would look at this, how the development code would look at it, that might answer those questions. It might fall into the category of new information that require you to open the public hearing back up, but I could provide that for you.
That's right, yeah. If we take new testing minutes, yeah, they'll open it back up again.
Which I guess it can be done. What would the council like? Which direction? Do you want to kind of have it continued? You can, we close the public hearing, but we could reopen it and say it's a continuance?
Well, does it do any good? I can answer those questions now.
Okay.
If you're interested. It just might mean reopening the hearing tonight to see if any of the participants cared to comment on the new information.
Uh-huh. Okay. So we'll reopen the public hearing back up at 8:15 PM. Okay, Ron?
Okay. So the fire code does have provisions in it that require secondary accesses, and they're triggered by the number of units. That's true for single-family, that's true for multi-family lots. At the moment, we don't know what the number of units are gonna be here, because we don't have a site plan.
Can you move the microphone a little bit closer, Ron?
So we don't, we don't know at the moment how many units will be on here, so we don't know if the fire department condition for secondary access will be triggered or not. If it is triggered, when a site plan comes in, the fire department would be willing to accept a gated access. They do that in other places. The fire code really doesn't differentiate if that secondary access is gated or not. That would be an option under the fire code. One of the dilemmas that this site will run into, whether the zoning changes or not, is that there's also a section in the development code that says that dead-end streets have to end in a cul-de-sac. And so if the emergency access or connection to 17th is gated, then 17th becomes a dead-end street. It has to then end in a cul-de-sac, and that takes up a lot of space on the lot. If 17th isn't gated, then it's open, and it raises issues about what the condition of 17th is, and should it be improved to some level? And that, that dilemma about what should happen with 17th, whether it should be open, whether it should be gated, is one that, you know, staff and that developer and the neighborhood will have to address when a development application comes in, and that will be true whether the zone change is approved, denied, or not. It's not really a, directly a fire access issue. It's more of the street, street standards in our development code that deal with dead-end streets.
Okay. Questions? Ron? Okay. Did anyone want to comment on what our traffic engineer just stated?
I have to say that.
Wait, Angela, you need to wait till you get to the microphone. Yeah, sorry.
I understand what he's saying, that if it's a dead end, it has to cul-de-sac. But if you went down that street right now, it is kind of a dead end, because it goes straight into that build, and nobody can drive into that build. So I understand what he's saying and where the fire department says that, but technically, if you went down my street right now, it's a dead end.
It's just a part of when things are developed, this is what it needs to be done, so.
Well, and I understand that, that there would still be a gate that they could go through to go around the apartment building, so I know. But yeah, like they said, right now, technically, it is a dead end, and it's a straight dead end, so.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. So council, the hearing is still open. We have not closed it then for the second time. What would you like to do? Would you like to still have more information brought back, or, or what?
We're working with this pink sheet then.
I didn't get a pink sheet, but I think it's your motions that.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. So do you want the hearing closed? Are you ready for it to be closed?
Sure.
Okay. All right. 8:19 PM, then I'll close the public hearing. Okay? And what would you like to do?
Can we read the, read the proposed adoption?
Do you want the, do you want to do the motions, or do you want the ordinance? Motion? Okay.
I move the city council adopt the ordinance that would amend the zoning map from residential medium RM to residential medium density attached RMA. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report and findings in support of the proposal made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
A second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I plan to vote no on this motion for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's unfortunate to have single-family zoning budded up against our highest density of housing. And the RMA is our highest density of housing in spades. So I plan to vote no on the motion. And I plan to vote no on the motion because of the objection of the neighbors and because of the continuing lack of connectivity that we see in this development. So I vote no.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All those in favor, you have the motion is for adoption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Motion carried, and that's five to one. Okay? All right.
Sorry, folks.
Yeah. Thank you, folks.
Okay. Let's see. With that, a quasi, quasi judicial decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following adoption of an amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted text and findings and notify the department of any substantial changes which may have occurred in the proposal since any previous notification to the department.
Okay? Thank you. And David, I do have a question. So the option then is for, the zone change can come solo or can come with a site plan, right? That's in our administrative rule, is what you were stating?
Yes. As far as what the process could be, people could either apply concurrently or consecutively.
Okay. So, so since we've been seeing them coming solo lately, is that staff that can come back and require to have them be both? Or is that the council to ask to have them both come together? Zone and site plan?
The, that change or that provision in the code happened before my employment here? So I'd like the opportunity to figure out how it came to be and when it happened, and then see what our options are to present that to you and figure out which way you'd like to go on that.
That'd be great. Yes, great. Okay.
The, yeah. We can do that, to answer your question very directly, it would, we would need direction from council that that's what the council would like to do, and then we would start the code amendment process in order to do that. But we would obviously want, request an opportunity to talk about the pros and cons of, of doing that, to, to make that a standard practice requirement. Will have consequences for the development community, financial consequences. And so it'd be good to understand those in the, in the context of the greater conversation.
Pros and cons would be great to have that information.
And could you also look up how we got to this point where we don't, we can't comment on the development at the time to change the zone? I'm guessing.
We can look at the dates of the, we can look at the dates, we have the dates in the codes tracked of when different codes were written or amended, so we can certainly uncover the history. And if, if the greater council would like us to come back with a report on the history and the process of, and the relationships of zone changes and, and land use applications, we can do that.
What the implications are.
I must have been here at the time, but I don't recall that.
Right. You were here, it was just downturn of the economy, I think, and it seems like a lot of things.
I think you slide through a great, yeah.
Yeah, I think this process has been this way as long as, Ron, do you recall a change in this process? Yeah, it's been.
Well, this is the third time that I know of that we have come to an impasse, because we couldn't come up with a, a way to help somebody get past something that we recognized was onerous.
It's four, remember the Waverly Street?
Waverly was the first one I remember.
North Albany, the one out on Marion Ferry that we had, and now this one.
So I would like to know personally, I would like to know what the implications are. So we can come up with a reasonable, you know, process. This may be the best, the most reasonable there is, I don't know, but I'd like to have options.
So just to make, it's looking like there's at least four people that want to have this discussion. And so just to make sure we have that direction clearly, we're wanting to look at the, we're only talking about zone changes and their relation to their subsequent application that's associated with the zone change.
Yeah.
I think so.
Right. We used to have them this, together, jointly together, so.
Okay. Well, we'll look at, we'll look at that and provide a report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, David. Okay. Next, we're still under public hearings, but I'm gonna move. Okay, next, we're still under public hearings, but I'm gonna move item number two up before item number one, so Mr. Bredner can be able to not stay as long, have to stay along for our water one, so you can be able to head back over the mountain, Miles. Okay, all right, Ed.
Thank you, Mayor. As your packet indicates, just a little background before I jump into what we need to do tonight, the, as you well know, we own land out on Timber Street, south of Somerset, and we, at the direction of council, prepared and advertised requests for proposals to solicit interest in selling some of the properties that we hold out there. Specifically, we labeled those at the time parcels one, two, and three. Page 95, in your packet, is a map that doesn't label them as parcels one, two, and three anymore, and that's because this is a proposed subdivision map that's in the works right now, hasn't been settled yet. Lot one on that map on page 95 is the subject of what is going to be a public hearing on the subject tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that the map, Lot one, reconciles with what we had previously described as parcel one in our former discussions. So just make sure that there's no confusion about that. By state law, we need to hold a public hearing. That public hearing has been duly noticed, advertised in the newspaper in accordance with state law, advertised on November the 30th, which brings us to this evening. And so, once the public hearing is conducted and closed, then we'll be asking the city council for your favorable consideration on a resolution that is on page 94, I believe. Yes, 94. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you might have, or you can move forward with the public hearing.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at 8:28 PM. And council, have questions for Ed? The only thing, Ed, when you said advertising, which is in the paper, which a lot of people don't see, the little fine print in the back, was there any other notification on the site that there was, like, signs put up for public hearing on that site?
No.
It was just put in the paper?
Just in the newspaper, and of course, there have been some previous newspaper accounts of this ongoing conversation as well. The council, as you well remember, has been discussing the sale of this property for a few meetings now, so... But no, we did not put signs out on the property.
Okay, so it's really, the public really hasn't... They don't really know about what is being proposed there? There's been nothing?
Well, I wouldn't characterize it that way, Mayor. I would say that perhaps members of the public that were reading the newspaper articles and paying attention to the council's discussion would be aware of it, but otherwise, no.
Okay, questions? All right, and I don't see any. Is there... Miles, would you like to come up for anything you'd like to say?
Hello, I am Miles Bredner, B-R-E-A-D-N-E-R. My office address is not over at the Mountain Mae, it's just over in Corvallis, 123 North Plaza, Seventh Street.
Oh, it is. I thought you were over in Bredner. Yeah.
I'd just like to tell you about my day. I had a great day this afternoon.
Oh, good.
I have the cards of the people that I met with today. One was with Matthew Ruppers, nice gentleman at City's staff. One was with Russell Allen, Director of Business and Operations for Greater Albany Public School District. And also in attendance was H.M.K. Company for the Project Managers for GALS. And everyone was very enthusiastic about building the $29 million school out of Timber Ridge. And they were pushing me for when I could get the Somerset extension improvement stuff. And the haggling process began about who would pay for what and what they could get out of me. So anyway, we had that go around today, which was very exciting. And Mr. Blaine is working at securing all of the wetland permitting from the court with our help, and we think we're pretty close to that. So we're hoping to get that all concluded here shortly, and to build that extension for you sometime this summer, so the school can get going. Anyway, I'm active in this community, and I have been for a very long time. I really like working here, and I like working on challenging projects. I had the pleasure meeting Mr. Root a couple of years ago, and we had a challenging project in North Albany, and it resulted in Benton County acquiring more land for a park. And we have a long history of shaking hands and making deals and keeping them and giving the communities something pretty good, and I'm proud of that. Same thing in Somerset and the Timber Ridge area. That is a big development that we're starting out there, and I am really excited to be in the twilight of a less than illustrious career as a developer, being part of that project. So this piece that we're hoping to buy from you forms part of our planning and excitement for that neighborhood, and it involves Jason Takarski with the Mountain West Investment because they have a lengthy resume and strong ability to perform for multifamily properties. I'm, for the most part, a single-family developer, but I'm really excited to work out there. Had a great, great time working on this with City's staff. It's taken us about three years to get everything that we've accomplished so far done. So that's up to you. I did bring a check with me.
Oh, you did, okay.
Mayor, could I tag just a little bit here? So the parcel that's subject tonight to the public hearing is parcel one. Now, it's soon to be Lot one under the new subdivision. The council's had information previously on the purchase price that's been set of $615,000. You were also aware that a purchase and sale agreement has been negotiated with Miles for that amount. That amount is the appraised value in accordance with the city's commission of an independent fee appraiser. So it's consistent with the direction that we've been heading now for quite some time. Just a footnote, parcel two is also, as Miles indicated, of interest to them. We will be bringing that item back to you on June the 10th for another public hearing but specific to parcel two, which is now going to be Lot two. With that, any more questions?
Questions? Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item? This would be for the sale of land owned by the city and to be sold, 15 acres on Somerset and Timber Ridge. Seen any? Okay, any questions? With that, we will close the public hearing at 8:33 PM. And counsel, what would you like to do with this item? There is a resolution on page 94.
Move to approve the resolution on page 94.
Sorry.
Okay, and any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Miles. We'll look forward to seeing you next month for that other parcel. Thank you. Okay, now we will go back to opening up a public hearing at 8:35 PM, and this is for water rates. Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Miles.
So Mayor, I'm gonna say this now so I don't forget, even though we're in this public hearing, that David noted for me that we need to go back and take action on the ordinance for the zone change.
Oh, we did.
So we'll have to go back and do that, but I can...
It's a resolution, isn't it?
Right, is he needing... Was he still here?
He is still here, yeah.
Did he want us to do it now so he can leave?
I think he would appreciate that.
Okay. So with that, we're closing the public hearing on the water at the same time, and then the ordinance was on page six, I believe.
Move to approve the ordinance on page six?
Yeah.
He's got a reader.
I gotta read it.
Oh, you gotta read, okay.
Ready? An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the city, excuse me, the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for an unaddressed parcel, Lynn County assessor's map number 11S-03W-08DB, tax lot 100.
Move to have ordinance read second time.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No, but I won't.
Okay, so that was a yes then?
Yeah.
We know you sent...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Motion carried, second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for an unaddressed parcel, Lynn County assessor's map number 11S-03W-08DB, tax lot 100.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Due to frustration.
Okay, so that was Dick and Rich on that one, I know. Okay, all right. Are we done with that item now, Jeff? Okay. With that now, at 8:37 PM, we'll open the public hearing on the water rates. We've been juggling around on...
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So as a matter of practice, the council holds public hearings for setting rates. They're not required, but it's something that the council does in order to afford the community an opportunity to come forward and provide comment on suggested adjustments. So I'll go ahead and give the same presentation that you heard on Monday. I'll try to talk a little bit faster so we can keep things moving along here. If you want me to stop and slow down to any point, please speak up. It wasn't gonna go that fast. A little faster. There we go. All right, so tonight, we're gonna talk about how rate revenues are used. We are going to discuss what staff's current rate recommendation is, and we'll provide you with an updated five-year rate projection. As we've done, we tend to do these annually, or we attempt to do them annually for each utility, so that we have a good understanding of where we are and where we might be headed over the next several years. So there's an obvious connection between the service charges or the rate revenue that we receive through utility payments and the services that we're able to provide the community. In the biggest picture sense, our overarching goals are to provide safe drinking water for our residents. We want to have reliable service. When people go and turn the tap, they receive quality water. We need to have fire protection for our community, and then we need to have capacity to serve growth or respond to economic development opportunities that might arise. When you think about where the rate revenues go or how that money is used, you can categorize them into three areas. One is for debt repayment. We have one loan. I'll show the information on that in a moment, but the first thing we do is we cover our debt payments, debt service payments. The next thing we fund is operations and maintenance activities. You'll see a long list of infrastructure that we have to maintain and operate, and those have costs associated with them. After we cover our debts and fund our operations and maintenance activities, whatever money is left over, we're able to use to fund capital projects, and we'll talk about what our goals are for capital project funding. On the debt side, we have one loan for the AM Joint Water Plant as an annual debt service payment approaching $2 million. That's made up of rate revenues are used to pay that, as well as SDC revenues. When we get into the forecast piece, we'll talk about why that relationship is important to understand, and we will have that paid in 2034. Moving on to operations and maintenance, we have a list here of infrastructure that we have to operate and maintain, everything from the dam and fish screens and 18 miles of canal, two water treatment plants, to 260 miles of pipe and 19,000 services. We have a lot of infrastructure. Next couple of slides give statistics on activities that our operations and maintenance staff performed last fiscal year. Broken them into categories. This one's obviously for the canal. I'm not gonna go through and read these, and I'll just reference a couple of them. You see a lot of inspections and repairing where inspections dictate looking for breaches in the canal or breaks in stormwater pipes that cross over, water quality sampling, those types of things. Provide some photos here of different activities that our canal crew works on, everything from cleaning trash racks and debris screens, brush cutting, to inspections and bank repairs. Couple photo, before and after photos of a bank repair project. When we talk about water treatment, we produced approximately 2.6 billion gallons of water last fiscal year. We, and then all of the associated work that goes along with that, ranging from water quality monitoring and testing to responding to different equipment alarms. Some photos of the inside of the AM plant, lab. Next two slides here provide a good number of distribution statistics. You see a lot of replacing, installing, or repairing of services, meter boxes, meters, exercising valves, flushing hydrants, those types of things there. Continue on with leak detection, monitoring, or, excuse me, managing our cross-connection program. And as I pointed out on Monday, the two bullets I like are responding to 21, over 2,100 line-locate requests and responding to, in addition to that, about 1,100 customer inquiries related to our water system, along with routine weekly inspections and servicing of pump stations and reservoirs. Some photos here of the crews, Valley View Reservoirs.
No pictures of any skunks?
No skunks in the water system, thankfully. So all those activities that we do for operations and maintenance obviously come at a cost, and this slide shows the five-year history of O and M expenses. You see how those costs have increased over the last five years, and if you think about it, you have costs just like we have in our home for fuel or chemicals, power, utilities, all these things that increase due to inflation on an annual basis that we have to respond to. In addition to that, we have, operations and maintenance activities require people in order to perform that work, and people have costs associated with them, and there are increases in salaries and benefits and those things over time that can impact those costs as well. Chris and her staff have worked hard to try to minimize increases over time, done a good job at that. So after we make our debt service payments and conduct all those operation and maintenance activities, whatever's left, our design and construction work group gets to access for completing major capital projects. And so you see some photos here of different capital projects and engineering construction plan set. We'll talk about our targeted amount or our goal for the amount of funding that we would have in order to complete this type of work in just a moment. So in addition to all those other statistics, there's a lot of other things that we do to support the water system. We've provided some of them here, everything from utility billing and managing water rights to reviewing development proposals, responding to development inquiries. And then this last year, our water superintendent and her staff... And then this last year, our water superintendent and her staff, they hosted a celebration of Drinking Water Week, was done here at City Hall, and tried to engage with the community a bit and have some interactive activities for kids, also just a good time for people to be able to see the behind-the-scenes a bit and see what is required in order to keep a water system like Albany is moving. If I knew a IT guy, I'd... All right, so our rate recommendation this year is to proceed with a 1.5% rate increase to be effective January 1st, 2018. That would generate about $200,000 per year in additional revenue. And what that does is allows us to continue to meet our debt service and operation and maintenance obligations, but also to stay on track for funding that capital improvement target that we set with council several years back, that now when you consider inflation, it's at $1.45 million a year. And we talked a little bit about on Monday, I won't go into it in great detail, but this is a number that we anticipate revisiting in the coming years as we look at taking a step back, though we've made so much progress on the steel lines, doing an overall asset management approach, type of valuation to our water system, make sure that this number is appropriate from that perspective, but also as we understand a little bit more about where we're heading with street maintenance funding and how that'll interact with this program as well.
And you did mention at our work session that a lot of this is subjective and that it is dependent upon what the weather happens during the summer, et cetera, et cetera.
Revenues, revenues for sure. Yeah, that's a variable. Yeah, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. Few numbers for you. After the 1.5% rate increase, per-day cost for water only on a single-family residential customer would be $1.37 if they use six units a month. And when you look at all of the utilities that Albany has, water, sewer, and stormwater, after the 1.5% water rate increase, you'd be looking at $3.28 for someone who uses six units of water. So at this point, this is where we try to take a look into the future and see what we might be anticipating, and there are several variables that go along with that when we try to look into our crystal ball. One of those are the rate revenues, as Ray just mentioned, and that is variable with the weather, because if we have a very wet summer, we're not gonna sell as much water as if we had a very hot, dry summer. Additionally, SDC revenues are based on market conditions and how much development is occurring in the community in any given year. And then we have our personnel and operations expenses, as we talked about prior, that are variable. And then there's always the potential that we have an unforeseen capital need, whether that's responding to a major break or a large pump failure, or whether that's needing to reevaluate our strategy because we're participating in more street improvements. On the revenue side of things, five-year history here for you, you can see where revenues have generally increased over the last five years, exception being last fiscal year. If you recall, we did a 2% water rate reduction in March of 2017 in response to the stormwater utility coming online. The reason for that is utility billing costs were previously split 50/50 between the water and sewer funds, and now with the stormwater utility online, those funds are split three ways. So that cost then, rather than charge for that in both utilities, water and stormwater, those rates were reduced to reflect that change, so they weren't double-charging. SDC revenue over the last five years, you can see at the far left, we're climbing out of the recession. We didn't have as much SDC revenue as we've had over the last four years. Been pretty consistent the last four years, or right in that $375,000 a year range. And that's important, so as I'll try to show on this graph. My cursor here. So this top blue line, dashed blue line, that's our total debt service payment on an annual basis. I can't see the numbers there, but it's about $2 million. This dashed green line in the center is how much of that payment, water rate revenues, contribute to that, and it's about 3/4 or 1.5 million. This dashed... I think it was purple, it looks blue from here, but this dashed purple line is SDC's obligation to that debt service payment. It's about $500,000 a year. This red solid line that you see start to diverge from that dashed line is what SDC funds have been used or are anticipated to be used in order to cover that payment. And so you see that gap there. If you recall back to the previous slide, we were showing $375,000 a year roughly in revenues, and that payment's running about $500,000. So what's been happening over the last several years is we've been able to cover that gap with reserves, and we're anticipating that as we move farther out in time here, that those reserves are gonna be exhausted and that we'll have this gap. Now, we're not able to complete with 100... predict with 100% accuracy what our SDC revenues are going to be. So it's possible that this divergence will occur sooner or later than we anticipate, hopefully later. Well, why this is important is because when we have this gap and SDCs can't pay their part of that debt service payment, we have to go back up to this other line, and we have to add in more water rate revenues to cover that debt payment. So that means is we have less money than available to do capital projects. And at that point, council will have a decision to make of, do you adjust rates because of that, or do you do less capital projects at that time? But there'll be decisions to be made. The dollar amount... order magnitude that we're talking about is not something to be... it's not a sky is falling, we need to be overly concerned. It's just something we need to be prepared for, conscious of, and have a plan to address. All right, so this graph shows where we've been and where we're headed. On the left, the gray bars are history, and blue is what we're suggesting for next fiscal year and then the subsequent five years. So what you see is we haven't had a rate increase since January of 2015 in water, and then you see the 2% rate reduction that last March, at the time the stormwater utility came on. We're proposing a 1.5% to be effective January 1st. And then when we look into our crystal ball, we're thinking we're looking at around 3.5% rate increases as you move out past that. Trying to just keep pace with inflation is basically what's happening there. But that assumes that that capital target doesn't change as well. So as that capital target changes, or any of those other variables change, those percentages change as well. Last two slides here, one of the things we try to do is give you a picture of how we compare with other communities in Oregon. I can't read this from here, so I'm gonna go off of memory. This is water only. We're comparing with, I think I remember, 28 other communities. We rank 11th. We've tried to highlight some of our neighboring communities. You see where all but Corvallis, of the ones that we've highlighted, are higher than Albany. When we go to a combined utility bill, when you think of water, sewer, stormwater, and many communities have a transportation utility as well, Albany does not, many other communities do, but when you add that in for those that do as well, we... and compare with those same 28 communities, we drop down to 12th, and again, our neighboring communities are... have higher total bills than Albany, except for Corvallis. These are single-family residential bill comparisons. So that concludes the staff report. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Yes.
Yes. On page 90, do you have page 90?
I will momentarily.
Okay, okay. Wanna make sure we're talking on the same page. You got it?
I'm there.
Says new account service fees, regular working hours, $15. Is that $15 an hour? Or is it $15 for a trip?
Is Babbitt still here? Ask my U V person. Okay, yeah. Flat fee.
Flat fee of $15.
Yeah.
So that's putting a man in a truck and driving him out there to restore service and turn it back on for 15 bucks.
Or is that for the account, setting up an account?
Right. Because we have another... there's a call.
Well, there's an after-hours for $60. So we set up accounts after hours for $60 then?
I think so, not on new accounts.
Well, it says new account service fees, regular working hours, $15, after-hours, $60. That's what it says.
Right.
So the question is, is that $15 an hour? Or is it $15 a flat fee to put a man in a truck and drive him out to wherever to turn a service on for 15 bucks?
I don't know the answer to your question. I'd have to report back.
The $15 is charged regardless of whether the water's on or not. It's not an hourly fee, it's a flat rate. It's charged for... in the office, the time it takes for someone to set up every new account.
So we set up accounts, it's after-hours for $60 now?
That's a restore. If the water's off and we have to go out and turn the water on after regular hours, it's $60.
So is the $15 for turning the water on during regular business hours?
It's charged to all new accounts regardless of whether the water is on or off. It's a setup fee for a new account.
So it would sound... former U V employee, so thank you, Holly.
Holly would know.
I don't think the question's getting answered.
So I think the answer... what I'm hearing is that it's $15 whether they have to drive out and turn the water on or not. So in some cases, yes, it does include the cost, the $15 to send somebody out in a truck, and sometimes it's $15 when it's all on the computer work at the desk.
So we're paying guys $5 an hour? Because we... the $15 won't cover the cost of the truck to drive out there, the fuel, the insurance, and the wages for the guy to go turn the water off. That $15 doesn't even begin to take care of what it costs to operate that, if that's what I'm hearing. And then it's $60 after-hours?
Well, you consider they're already out there, so they don't go to the office back and forth all day. They're already out on a set route.
Okay.
And they do have to go to the... so I misspoke. They do have to go to the property regardless to get a meter read, to know where to start the new read for the account. But it's not $15 an hour, because it doesn't take them an hour to go out there and do that.
Well, I understand that, but it still takes a truck and gas and fuel and insurance and everything else to get a man to turn on or read the meter, and $15, to me, doesn't... how does that cover our cost? That's the question. How does that cover our cost? And then we wanna...
Sometimes it's gonna be just like probably a number of other fees, where sometimes it's going to be more expensive and sometimes it's gonna be less expensive.
Well, maybe I'm... the reason I'm asking that is maybe we need to look at our fees and adjust them accordingly to what it actually costs, because I know it's more than 15 bucks.
In some cases, it might not be.
It might not be, but I know it's... if it's more... if it's $15, I'm gonna hire that guy because he's cheap. Okay, so I'm...
But I think you're... if the person's already out on a route and driving the truck anyway as part of the normal duties, and they happen to stop on a route and say, turn on the service for a new house and a new development, it's not like they're starting from back and forth.
I understand that. I understand that. You're still taking him away from his route. You're still incurring a cost for him to go and drive and do what he needs to do. And it's... and you're telling me that it's 15 bucks is gonna cover the cost that he made?
It conceivably could be 50 feet that he's having to drive.
Okay, well, we're gonna... we can split hairs about this all night long. I'm just asking if $15 is a reasonable charge for what the guy's doing, whether he's on the route or not. Heck, he can burn more than $15 worth of gas.
Right. Mike, why don't we have staff then maybe kind of research some of this and then bring it back? Because it is a good question, so it's kind of needs to be clarified, so maybe have staff check into it.
Well, it all ties into that 1.5% increase. So if we're not recovering our actual cost, maybe we don't need a 1.5% increase if we recover our costs. That's what I'm saying.
So what type of information would you be like that?
I'd just like to know if we're recovering our costs. There's gotta be a way to do that, look at that. I mean, we got a real smart man over there in finance to be able to do that for us just by pushing a couple of buttons.
So it might need to be clarified maybe over the new account service fees up against the line item, other restore service, and maybe what that entails, Mike. And I don't think it needs to come back to the council, just even send us out an email maybe explaining more what the difference is.
It has a bearing on the 1.5% increase, because, okay, what about the $60 an hour? You're telling me it's $60 to restore after-hours? So that involves... I'm sure the labor contract says he gets paid a minimum of two hours or something for a call-out. So he gets called out, he has to go get a truck, he has to go drive. It sure ain't heck no 60 bucks. It ain't. It can't be. If it is, you gotta show me that trick. Okay? That's what I'm saying. So this 1.5% increase, I'm bothered by it. If those are actual numbers and they're real, I'm bothered by it.
Mayor, I get his point, that is, how are we recovering our costs? Are we recovering our costs by what it actually costs to go out there and do it, and is that quantifiable somehow? Or are we covering the cost that, well, it costs us something, so let's put a number in there, and then have overall overhead cover the actual cost? I mean, one is reimbursement for people who actually do something, for somebody who didn't pay their bill and now they're getting signed back up. And the other is, everybody gets to foot the bill for it, and it's just a different thought process. I mean, if in fact it covers our cost, I mean, it's not... to me, I wouldn't think it'd be all that difficult to know, okay, you're gonna send somebody, it takes them X amount of time and so many expenses, and that either looks like it covers it or it doesn't. And send it back to us and say, yes, it does, no, it doesn't.
Well, I think we can probably get... staff can come back with a little bit more clarifying on those couple items, so on that. That might help out. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we need to see if there's any public comment over the water rate increase proposal here, which is a 1.5% increase, if there's anyone that would like to testify. Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. With that, at 9:04 PM, I will close the public hearing. And council, you do have a resolution that is on page 89.
It will be approved.
Second?
Okay, any discussion?
I'm not gonna vote for it until we get some clarification on these fees, because maybe we don't... if we change the fees, we don't have to raise it 1.5%. That's... that's where I'm coming from, okay? Because in retrospect, I still go back to the fact that last year we gave them a 2% discount, and this year we're gonna take back 1.5%. Okay? That's why I'll vote no.
Mike, I think we could calculate this number. I don't think it's... but I don't think this is gonna offset, because there's not that many accounts to get activated or deactivated. They're not gonna cover the cost of the 1% that Public Works is asking for. This is a different issue.
I'd still like to see it.
No, I understand that. We could provide that, but it's not gonna make an impact in terms of the 1%, because they don't activate or deactivate accounts that frequently, that is gonna generate that much revenue to do that.
The amount was, what, $180,000 at the 1.5% would raise? And the frequency with which new accounts are opened comes nowhere near to providing even a fraction of that.
Yeah, so we're hearing what you're saying, and we could provide that information. I think we can get to that, but it's not gonna impact this. I think we can get to that, but it's not, it's not gonna impact this.
Right.
Significant.
A small amount, probably, yeah. Any other questions? Okay? And...
I'm true.
Okay? And let's see, okay, with that, the motion is for approval of the one and a half percent increase. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay? Was that a no, Mike?
Well, you said same sign.
Okay. It was kind of a whisper.
No, you said same signs.
Yes. Okay. All right, so there was one no. Okay? All right. Motion carry. Next, that's finished our public hearings, and next is business from the public, and anyone that'd like to bring an item forward for business from the public? So, yep, okay, Bill, and then Lisa.
Mike, a shirt?
I do. I like it.
My name is Bill Root, R-O-O-T. I live at two-six-three-four Northwest Valley View in Albany. And I'm here today as the chairman of the Albany Toy Run. We just concluded that on the third of December. And I, I'm here to discuss a couple of different things that were right and wrong. The weather was okay. It rained a little bit, but it wasn't enough to interfere with the traffic. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred motorcycles, probably close to fifteen or twenty classic cars. We had a pickup truck that was absolutely, it had a canopy on it and it was absolutely full from top to bottom, front to back. We had a lot of toys. Lot of toys, unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of kids. We invited a hundred and twenty kids and only seventy-eight showed up. So there was a lot of extra toys. The extra toys were gonna be given away three different ways. The Eagles provides Christmas baskets to needy families. And so each of the kids in the needy families will get two toys and a stuffed animal. And also this year, they're gonna provide Christmas baskets and toys to families that are, are living in Oxford houses. Something that's new, that they're gonna try this year to help out some of those people. What was left over, which wasn't very much, is gonna be donated to the Lebanon Motorcycle Group, the Road Maggots, for their toy run, which happens next Sunday. One of the things that I think is important to, to let you guys know about, we had a anonymous donor this year, donated a hundred and twenty stuffed animals for our distribution. And, and that's incredible. They, they went to the cutting room, which is one of our members of the committee, excuse me, he, for whatever reason, I don't know, but anyway, they donated a hundred and twenty stuffed animals, which were given away. In addition, I would like to say that I would like to thank a number of different groups. The Christian Motorcycle Associations, they have provided us for the last few years with their trailer, and they supply coffee and donuts. And the Road Maggots, this is a motorcycle group from Lebanon, they come out every year and have provided us with the road guards. Also, the city of Albany, the city of Albany has provided police officers for the road guards on Highway twenty and a fire truck to lead the parade. This year, the parade was led by a fire truck, and right after the fire truck was Sergeant Parker, one of Albany's finest, dressed up as Santa Claus, riding in the sidecar. He told me afterwards, he said he lost his hat.
Lost his hat along the way.
And everything else, actually, we, we made a few changes this year, but all went well. And we'll continue. We sold a lot of these shirts, we have some left over. We'll probably sell them again next year.
It was great, great event, so, yeah.
And, and Sharon got a couple of items, we, we had a plaque for her, for her participation in our toy run for as many years. And also she got one of these, it's a...
Yep, put on the plaque, so, very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was great, yeah. And then Councilor Kopczynski participated in the parade with his car.
Yes, he did.
Yeah.
He said that next year he's gonna decorate it.
I don't know what I'm getting into, that's cool.
Well, if you decorate it enough, you'll get the award for the best decorated car.
I thought you were going to crush it.
And then when they, when Santa came off, you know, got off the motorcycle, and I looked and I looked at him, I thought, oh, that looks familiar. And I recognized that it was Sergeant Parker, and the first thing he says, I lost my hat.
Yeah, he managed to find one somewhere.
Did he? Yeah, he was just, he felt so bad that he loses Santa's hat along the way. Yeah, it was great, great event, so. And I think the only reason it was down on the attendance for kids is one of the organizations evidently messed up and didn't get the notification out there.
Yeah.
That's what happened.
And, and that's unfortunate, cause if you can tell from what it says, it says we're rolling for the kids, and that, that's the bottom line.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much, Bill, for organizing it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Great job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lisa.
No.
Please.
Yeah.
Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association Executive Director. I wanted to thank the city for their help throughout this holiday season. We've had help with putting up snowflakes, with putting up our tree, and also some fabulous participation, and I wanna thank Mayor Sharon and Mike Sykes for participating in our parade.
Thank you, yeah. And the police department this year was very helpful, that they blocked off First Street.
That was wonderful.
That made it go very smooth, you know, this year for it, so...
Lots of community partners and...
I was amazed how many kids you just saw attending that parade throughout. It was just so many kids.
And weather helped also, wasn't it?
Yep, that was just perfect.
We planned on good weather and we got it.
Thank you for bringing good weather, Lisa. Yeah, thank you.
It was a good day throughout Albany with the...
Yeah. And one thing such a hit is the, the horse and carriage. It's like, boy, people are lined up to ride on that, that poor horses packing all those folks in that, in that wagon, but how many does a wagon hold? How many people?
The ones that they brought hold fourteen each.
Fourteen? Oh, it looked like they had more than that on, but boy, those are such a hit, that people are just really lined up.
Burt of Metals and the Monkeys, the Albany Visitor Association collaborate on that piece of it.
That's just wonderful, yeah.
Lots of community partners, a warehouseer brings in the tree, Civic Power helps set it up, and the city helps do the lights on the tree. And then, of course, you and a cute little girl help light the tree.
Oh, wasn't she precious?
And wanna thank the fire department.
She was so excited, just with her arms up. If I had not have chosen her, that poor little girl would have been devastated, so, yeah, she was just a, she was such a sweetie, so...
And the beautiful fire truck.
Yeah. Oh, it was great. Yeah, thank you so much for organizing it.
Just wanted to thank everyone.
And this weekend is the parlor tour. Yep, so, yeah.
Parlor tour's on Sunday. We have a free community movie, White Christmas, on Saturday, and then the following Saturday, Santa will be visiting restaurants and businesses downtown.
Great, great.
Still lots of holiday cheer coming, and some caroling happening over, I think they've had to go from three nights to four nights with the, the caroling.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah. Oh, it's great. Yep, fun time in Albany, so...
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Rebecca, too. Thank you. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay? All right. Council, you have some adoption of resolutions, and the first one is on page ninety-seven. This is one that you had the item come to us at our work session on Monday. Staff have anything to say on this item?
I don't have anything additional from Monday. If you'd like to, me to answer any specific questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, all right. Any questions? All right. Resolutions on page ninety-seven.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carry. Okay, this one's authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Lebanon for emergency biosolids hauling. And which staff would like to talk about this one? Any? Yep, I speak Chris.
Hello, Mayor and Council. We talked about this at the work session. This is a, an idea we had to help Lebanon. The past two winters, they've had to enter into emergency hauling agreements for wastewater treatment plant solids. And we have capacity and the ability to receive a limited amount of solids from Lebanon. And the IGA is structured so that we would recover all of the costs associated with receiving, de-watering, and hauling the solids. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Okay? If not, there's a resolution on page one oh nine.
Move for the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Okay. It looks like Bessie said it all, so she could have it. Yep. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carry. Okay, thank you, Chris. Next item is authorizing the finance director to sign the amendment to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund loans. And this must be Stewart's.
That would be, thank you, Mayor. In two thousand and five and two thousand and eight, the city took out loans with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for expansion of our water reclamation facility. The two loans were in the amount totaled sixty-nine million dollars and were at a stated interest rate for the duration of the loans, which is a twenty-year loan. In, on November third of this year, the Environmental Quality Commission considered amendments to the rules governing those loans to allow an amendment of those loans that'll lower interest rates to match current market conditions. In spring of this year, we were negotiating, well, not negotiating, we were putting together a master resolution and a refunding of these bonds that we, or these loans with a bond cell. And we became aware of the potential amendment to the rules at a rate that would be more competitive than even the bond market rate in the current market. So, we worked with Department of Environmental Quality on those amendments, participated in hearings to present the advantages to the city of Albany of them adopting the amendments. This is one provision of several provisions that they were considering in revising the rules. Couple months ago as well, we anticipated a favorable decision by the Environmental Quality Commission and made application for an additional project or an additional loan to fund an additional project in the community that has not been funded, and that's the Riverfront Interceptor Project, which is a very much needed wastewater collection project. And in anticipation that the savings generated from the amendment, the hopeful outcome, would be that we would pretty much be able to fund the additional project from the savings in the amended interest rate. The savings over the balance of the loans, about four million dollars in interest savings, and the annual savings will come pretty close to funding what council will consider in the future, loan from the same source for an additional capital project. So the recommendation is to enter into the amended agreement to lower the interest rate and receive that savings over the balance of the term of those loans.
Questions? Okay. Council, you have a resolution on page one nineteen, I mean, one fifteen.
Move for the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carry. Thank you, Stewart.
Yes.
Nice to be able to save money once in a while.
Yes, yes. Okay. Next, council is adoption of the consent calendar, and if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for the adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carry. All right. Next is the approval of an agreement. This is the intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County for the capital improvements of the Lynn County Fair and Expo. Jorge, is this one yours?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an item that has come before you a few times now. And the last time we reviewed this was during a work session, that Councilor Sykes was not available, and we decided, or the council decided to bring it to a regular session, but, well, the entire council was available for review and consideration. So basically, the, the TLT Advisory Committee recommends approval of the attached IGA and the hundred thousand dollars budgeted for FY seventeen eighteen be directed towards the replacement purchase of horse stalls based on the committee's review of the proposed project list from the Lynn County Expo Center. Findings that the horse stalls meet the criteria and definition of a capital expenditure that will maintain or increase TLT revenues in the future. This came before the TLT Committee on October eighteenth, and after reviewing all the capital projects that Randy Porter, Porter, which is the, Porter, which is the administrator for the Expo Center, the, the TLT Committee decided to focus on two projects. One was the horse stall, the other one was the outdoor arena project. And after all the questions and review, they decided that the horse stall would be the, the best one to consider and allocate this one hundred thousand dollars. So what you have before you is the IGA, so we can work with Lynn County, and this is gonna be, as you can see in the IGA, is gonna be based on reimbursement. So, the county is gonna be, is gonna be committing a hundred thousand dollars, the city a hundred thousand dollars, and then Randy is gonna be seeking through private investment the rest.
Okay? Questions?
Move to approve.
There's an agreement on page one forty?
Move to approve, you ready? Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carry. Thank you, Jorge. Council, next is reports, there's three of them. These are on Monday's agenda that we had for discussion. So, first one is approving the salary adjustment for the planning manager in the Community Development Department. This is on page one forty-nine. Questions, or entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, next you have reclassifying the administrative services supervisor to senior administrative supervisor in the city manager's office. This one is on page one fifty.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carry. And next is on page one fifty-one, and this is approving the salary adjustment for police lieutenants in the police department.
Move to approve, cause Mike is slow.
Second.
Bessie's fast. Okay, any discussion? Do you have Bill?
Question for the chief or David. Are lieutenants non-bargaining? Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carry. Okay, council, we made it through our agenda, business from the council. So, Bessie, anything this evening?
No, I'll miss the next meeting, so I just wanna wish everyone a happy end with this.
Oh, on Monday's meeting, you won't be there? Oh, on Monday's meeting, you won't be there? Okay, yeah, Monday is our last one for this year. Okay, and that's it? Okay, have a great vacation.
Yes.
And, oh, what about Cara next week?
Nope.
Oh, you won't be at Cara either? Okay. Okay, Bill, anything?
Yeah, just a question, probably for Jorge or Peter. On the consent calendar, it kind of flew through, and as I was thinking, we all said I. But in the work session on Monday, we talked about the study for equal pay and classification and so forth. I'm just still having a little sticker shock, so I'd be curious to know what you think the schedule will be for requesting an RFP when that might be publicized.
Yeah, we'll definitely get an RFP. David Shaw just left the room, but now that this is approved, we can go forward with that, and I'm sure that he has a number of firms that he probably has in mind, and will issue that RFP, and we'll, you can take a look at it if you like beforehand, but we'll issue that and let you know as soon as we get any response.
You know, I probably wouldn't even know what I'm looking at unless it was related to something I had experience with, but, yeah, that was going to be my next question.
What you might be interested in is the scope of work, which might tell you, you know, give you a better feel for why you have that sticker shock.
Right, so, yeah, if it's all right with you, I might just pop in and talk to David sometime.
Sure.
But that's all I had.
On that, Bill, I talked to David a little bit before the meeting, and he says that he's hoping that it will come in under that. He says that it's kind of a high-end, so he's processed fingers.
Well, apparently, they're expensive, Peter. You mentioned it. The offer was $65,000.
Right. For a workforce of about 320.
Counsel Coburn?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Counsel Coburn, one of the things that David did mention is that in this particular study, we're not going to update our job descriptions, so that's some savings there. It's just the salary piece of it. It could come a little bit lower.
Anything? Nope. Favorite, anything?
Three days without being sick, Ray. That's good.
Yeah. Okay, great, nothing? Okay, Mike, anything? And I didn't this evening, but I think, Peter, you got some.
Yes, we met earlier today with Counsel on our potential litigation, which was announced a few days ago, and we also had the Millersburg City Manager and Millersburg City Attorney, and the recommendation was that I would ask one of you to make a motion and allow us to ratify who the team would be for litigation. If you recall, we talked about Counselor Coburn, Mayor Canopa, and Counselor Kopczynski at the last time we met. So I would like to throw that out there. If that's something that's possible, that would help us, because as we move forward now, there'll be several occasions where we'll have to come and brief you guys collectively on developments as they move along.
Okay, all right.
I move to approve the Manager's suggestion as to who's the, on the negotiating committee.
A second.
Okay, all right, motion's been made, and in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carry. All right, and next?
Yeah, I wanted to, if you noticed the decorations up here, the staff, several of the staff put those up earlier, along with the decorations on the front for the Holiday Food Fair. I wanted to commend them for that. I think it looks pretty cool. But really, the big kudos would go, you know, we talked just a few minutes ago about the $4 million in savings by combining two loans, and the recognition should go to Stewart for quite the, it's not a coup, but it's quite a feat to make that happen. $4 million is a chunk. I also wanted to note that, was it, last night, there was a request from California to deploy firefighters down to Southern California, to Ventura County, and so Lynn County has now sent 22 firefighters down, and none of them are from Albany. So they should be arriving in Chino, California, tonight to work in Ventura County.
Equipment also?
And equipment, that's correct. And so total out of Oregon is 10 strike teams of five engines each, which total 175 firefighters. So...
Is your old neighborhood threatened?
My mother's.
Is it?
Yeah, but it's pretty built up, so it's not the brush which catches fire very easily in Santa Ana winds.
I was wondering about all that brush. They're going to change their ideas down there about having all that brush?
Yeah, it's, yeah, yes, they do. They do need to.
They've had the brush and they've not had the brush about 500 times in the last 50 years.
They keep it, and those are royals.
Well, when you get those hot winds, there's just hardly, just no way to control anything.
Yeah, but we cut our tall grass down here.
Yeah, but those winds are horrible, but, yeah, wow. Anything else, or, okay, you didn't have any? Okay. Anything else, staff? Yeah, Jorge?
I just, Stewart and I have a quick item here. They want to provide an update on our ERP system, which is a finance, human resources, and utility billing system. So I just want a quick update on where we are and where we're headed. We opened a request proposal on September 17th. We closed that on October 18, October 17. We got three bids during this process. The cost range came between $750,000 to $1.6 million, the three bids. We conducted demos during the week of November 14th, and we are going to start working, negotiating a contract, and bring a recommendation for Counsel consideration during the January 10th regular meeting. So we just wanted to provide you an update of where this is at. Anything else to work?
That's it.
Which recommendation did I bring? 700 or 1.6?
Most likely 700.
Dang! Such a thought process.
Okay. Mayor, one have anything or not?
I just want to mention, we have two things happening at City Hall next Tuesday that you might be interested in, and one is the winter public employees' blood drive. We still have six appointments available, just in case you have any despair. And at the same time, we'll be having an energy lighting fair in the hallway at City Council, in outside of Council chambers. The Energy Trust of Oregon has a company that contracts with them to provide information about low-energy lighting products, and they will be for sale at very competitive prices for the general public. They'll be here the same hours as the blood drive, so come down and give some and buy some.
Could we get them, or we could get our streetlights on economic bulbs?
Well, we will be bringing a report to you about those streetlights shortly.
Oh, good.
Okay, and I remember one time when they had snowflakes hanging, and we had them, keep them through winter, in January, February, which is kind of nice, kind of nice.
I hear snowflakes are objecting to being called snowflakes.
Oh, yeah, they can consider us were a snowflake.
Having a hard time coping.
Yes. Chief, how did the transition go? Did you get 911 switched over to the new building?
Dispatch doesn't transition until next week.
Oh, next week?
We're taking traffic from now on.
Okay, great, great. So still a lot to get done, huh?
Is the flag up?
Yeah, yeah, great, so, yeah, thank you.
Is the flag up? All right.
Okay, anything else? So, okay, we have work session next Monday, the 11th, and Cara is on the 13th, and then we have Christmas Vacation, and then our next meetings are next year, January 8th and 10th. Okay, with that, we adjourn. Thank you both.